A work session meeting to order at 5:30 PM. This will be a work session on land use efficiencies, work tasks two of sequential UGB work plan, local docket G3-24. I would like to call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, and Evan Heptus, Associate Housing Planner, to present our topic to us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the second city council work session for the land use efficiencies work associated with the 2021-2041 Horizon Growth Planning Work Plan. The work plan is approved by the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, and the total work plan is due by March of 2026. The previous city council joint work session on this project was held on February 11th, 2025, with the Planning Commission. And in February, the Planning Commission and City Council reviewed potential land use efficiency measures and provided feedback. And at tonight's meeting, the City Council will focus on reviewing proposed land use efficiency measures for residential, industrial, and commercial lands. So some of the meetings leading up to tonight, most recently, on July 23rd, the Project Advisory Committee meeting was held, and this committee works with staff and a consultant team on the due diligence that's necessary for this work to better inform staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission. And then August 7th, the Planning Commission held a work session, and commissioners reviewed staff's recommendation and provided their policy recommendation to City Council, and more details are provided on that recommendation on page six of the staff report. So looking at tonight's work session and the presentation, the city is contracted with Echo Northwest and Beth Goodman, and then Jet Consulting, represented by Elizabeth Decker, to do this work. And tonight, we'll begin with a presentation from Beth to outline the proposed land use efficiency measures in relation to the needs that were identified in the city's housing needs analysis. And then City Council will be given an opportunity to discuss the information that's presented. And through this deliberation, staff is seeking input and policy direction on the proposed approach to the efficiency measures. And a quick summary of the current policy recommendation for context. So the Planning Commission recommended to adopt several land use efficiencies that would allow the city to meet its residential land deficit and industrial land deficit, and would reduce the commercial land deficit from 159 acres to 71 acres. And part of this recommendation is to also reevaluate commercial land needs again at the time of the city's next housing capacity analysis, which would take place around 2030 to 2031. So an acknowledgement that with that deficit still being identified of 71 acres, that reevaluating that in somewhat of the near future in terms of planning to make sure that we're staying on top of commercial land needs in 2030 to 2031. And then the Planning Commission also recommended to not pursue an urban growth boundary amendment to accommodate the unmet commercial land need, and Beth will talk a little bit more about the requirements there, a little bit more of the details. But a recommendation was to not pursue that urban growth boundary amendment at this time. And then, as a reminder, if the City Council decided to pursue that UGB amendment, that entire process would need to be completed by March of 2026. And then, we're thinking, hopefully approximately 6:20 tonight, we would like to move into the second half of tonight's presentation from Elizabeth Decker, who will be sharing the results of the code audit completed on the zoning ordinance, which was within the scope of the potential land use efficiency measures work. And a majority of these findings were also included as a technical memo in tonight's packet as attachment one to the staff report. And then following that presentation from Elizabeth, City Council again will be given an opportunity to discuss, and through this deliberation, staff is again looking for policy direction and input on the proposed approach. And the summary of what that current policy recommendation is from the Planning Commission is to not adopt the development code amendments as part of the sequential UGB work plan prior to March 2026. However, the recommendation is to continue to work with Jet Consulting to complete the code audit and develop a package of code amendments, primarily the ones identified in attachment one, and then if there's additional opportunities for improvements through that code amendment, or that code audit process, to pursue those in a broader effort at a later time. And the policy direction given at this meeting will help guide staff and consultants work for the next few months. So with that, I'll hand it over to Beth Goodman to begin the first half of our presentation tonight.
Thank you very much, Evan. I'm going to share my screen and get the PowerPoint going. Thank you for having me here this evening. All right, are you guys seeing my PowerPoint window okay? Great. Okay, so this evening, we're talking about land use efficiency measures. As a little bit of a review, we talked, well, the city did a urban growth boundary amendment in 2020 that addressed the prior residential land deficit for the 2003 to 2023 period. So in this project, you know, going forward from that, we did a housing capacity analysis that identified a deficit of 202 acres of land for residential needs. When a city has a deficit for residential needs, the state requires the city to go through this process, first of looking at land use efficiency measures, and then of looking at an urban growth boundary expansion if it's needed, if you have unmet need after the land use efficiency measures are identified and adopted. So you're required to do both of those steps if needed. On an economic opportunities analysis, where you had a deficit of 29 acres of industrial land and 159 acres of commercial land, the state allows the city to address the employment land deficiency, both through looking at land use efficiency measures and then an urban growth boundary expansion if needed. So the difference is with the housing deficit, you're required to do a UGB amendment if land use efficiency measures aren't sufficient to accommodate the expected need, but you're not required to do that for commercial or industrial land. So that frames a little bit of our discussion tonight. So a land use efficiency measure is just a policy or an action that changes a comprehensive plan or land use regulation to quantifiably reduce land needs, both for residential and for employment needs. So a change to your framework plan, for instance, is an example of that, rezoning land from one density to another, so one zoning district to another is another example of that. So in evaluating and implementing the land use efficiency measures, it's an opportunity for McMinnville to identify ways to increase the efficiency of use of land within the existing city limits and the urban growth boundary to better meet the needs through changes to these development standards and codes and policies, supporting the community's vision and values. So that last piece is an important piece, especially in McMinnville. So what you're doing with land use efficiency measures is largely up to the city. Examples of land use efficiency measures include changing your framework plan, rezoning or upzoning land to meet an identified land deficit, changes in your zoning code that would allow needed housing types or a wider range of employment uses. So for instance, you allow accessory dwelling units and middle housing types in areas where single unit housing is allowed. City has done this, that's an example of a type of land use efficiency measure. You can also change the zoning code to allow more dense housing or increased densities, such as allowing small lot subdivisions, which the city has already done. So these are the kind of things that are land use efficiency measures. So land use efficiency measures are needed to address that unmet need for land for housing and as well as commercial industrial land, but especially housing in this 2021 to 2041 sequential UGB amendment process, which, as Evan mentioned, is due March 1st, 2026. So the way this fits into the broader sequential UGB amendment process is in the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities, we identified the amount of land needed for these different types of uses. Here at step two, we're identifying land use efficiencies within the existing UGB. And then step three, if you reached it, would be an amendment to your urban growth boundary. And that would be required if you had an unmet residential land need and allowed if you had an unmet employment land need. So just as a reminder, here are the land deficits that came out of the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis, a deficit of 202 acres of residential land, a deficit of 29 acres of industrial land, and a deficit of 159 acres of commercial land, and a surplus of 44 acres for public and institutional land after you had addressed a remand on that particular issue. So there's no specific requirements for minimum type of efficiencies that you have to do. In other words, the state doesn't tell you exactly how much is enough land use efficiency measures. Measures should reduce, but don't need to fully meet the unmet land need. Cities need to adopt, or they should adopt, land use efficiency measures that reflect their own growth and development principles. So it's an opportunity for McMinnville to do a little introspection and identify strategies that align with community priorities, which I think we'll be talking about this evening. Many of the options that we're talking about, both those that you've already done and those that we're talking about this evening, are examples of good planning that are useful to advance other city goals, and we'll talk about that a little bit. So here are some examples of recent land use planning actions that are also land use efficiency measures in some cases. So looking at adopting the growth management and urbanization plan and the UGB expansion for the 2023 to 2023 planning horizon, that was the endpoint of your last UGB expansion. Looking at amending the public land need for the 2021 to 41 planning horizon per the DLCD remand. And then you've also done some amendments to your framework plan for the urban holding zone based on the reduced parkland need adopted in the 2024 Parks Plan update, and we'll talk about that more in some more details. So this is a reminder of where we were starting with here. So we've got a 202 acre deficit of housing because of the changes to your parkland, your parks plan. You've got a 127 acre surplus of parkland for parks, and I'm not going to go through all of the rest of these, but these are all changes needed to the framework plan or some changes that have been made to the framework plan. And as you're thinking about these changes in the framework plan, also think about the areas that they will affect. So for instance, looking at zoning land for R5, 36 acres of that is called for in the framework plan to meet some of the housing needs identified in the housing needs analysis. That's expected to, or already in the process of happening in the southwest area and the Fox Ridge Road area. Looking at your school land need, I'm going to skip down to that one. In discussions with the school district in the southwest area, it was identified by the school district, they're not going to need as much land for schools as they thought they would, it's a decrease of about 30 acres there, or 33 acres there. So you've got a 10 acre land need in the southwest area plan according to the school district. You've got about 39 acres that are planned for, or will be planned for commercial uses in the southwest and Fox Ridge Road areas. So although we won't talk about that a lot here, realize that there'll be some commercial land in those outlying areas. And then your parkland need as identified here. So we're telling you the answer before we go into the details. The deficit for residential land was about 1,101 dwelling units, or approximately 202 acres before land use efficiency measures. After the land use efficiency measures, which we'll talk about in a moment, you would have an additional 1,396 dwelling units of capacity. So that's about a 295 unit acre surplus. So the conclusion to that is, the result of the land use efficiencies that we'll talk about in a moment, the land needs are met inside the UGB. You don't need any more action after you've taken the actions to adopt the rest of the land use efficiency measures for residential. For industrial, a 29 acre deficit before the efficiencies, and looking at a change that we'll talk about in a few minutes around the airport, increasing industrial land by 30 acres, again, your need would be met inside the UGB. And then for commercial land need, 159 acre deficit, and the land use efficiency measures we'll talk about in a few minutes, would partially address that, a little more than half, leaving a 71 acre deficit. So that leave you unmet land needs for commercial in the UGB. And again, you're not required to expand the UGB for commercial land needs. And we'll talk about why it's probably a good idea perhaps not to expand the UGB for commercial solely. So then, the residential land use efficiency measures. We started with examining the planned uses of land in the urban holding zone from the 2020 UGB expansion. So again, you've completed the work to reassign land from reduced parkland need after the PROS plan was adopted. So you've already taken that step in the urban framework, in the framework plan, rather. You've reassigned land from public or institutional land need after the DLCD remand correction. You've already done that in your framework plan. And what you still have yet to do, I believe, is reassign land from the McMinnville School District based on their assessment of revised land need, a little less land needed for schools than they expected. The city is in discussions with Lynnfield University right now about how they're going to use their land on their campus, and Evan or Heather can talk about that in a little bit more detail if you have questions. But essentially, the university is planning on using some of the land on their campus for housing and for general housing, not just, you know, campus housing, so in other words, not Lynnfield dorms necessarily. And then land has been rezoned since the housing needs analysis was completed, upzoning from oftentimes R1 to R4, and that gives you an increase in capacity. So for all the details of this, it's in this very compact little table. We're showing you first about land in the urban holding reassigned to housing in the framework plan. So the 127 acres of parkland results in an increase in capacity of about 693 dwelling units at the density assumption of 5.46 dwelling units per acre, and that's the average density we assumed for development in urban holding in the housing needs analysis. You can see similar math for the public and institutional land and McMinnville School District. The changes on Lynnfield College's campus, about 33 acres that would be used now for housing, which was assumed not to be used for housing in the housing needs analysis because Lynnfield said that they planned to develop their campus in a different way, and they didn't want it to be considered for housing. Well, that 33 acres is assumed to develop at R4 densities, which historically, they've been 6.28 dwelling units an acre. And then you've adopted some changes to zoning already, about 16 acres rezoned land within the city limits since 2004, and a little bit of land that was rezoned in the three-mile lane area. So you've already done those changes. And that results in an increase of 1,000, or a total of 1,396 dwelling units of capacity. I'm going to go ahead and talk about the commercial and industrial, and then pause for questions. So industrial, again, we had a 29 acre land deficit. The city is in the process of some changes to the McMinnville Airport Master Plan, which will add 30 acres of land into the industrial land supply. That land was considered not available for industrial development in the EOA, as it was in the master plan for use at the airport. And then also, you're doing work at the McMinnville Landing or the Innovation Campus that's retaining an industrial zoning with an overlay that will focus uses on higher job generation. And that higher job generation is partially to compensate for land uses for retail center at McMinnville Landing. That's not officially, in quite the same way, a land use efficiency measure, but that's certainly something that the city is doing. We're not counting additional capacity from that, however. So the conclusion of that is that McMinnville has enough industrial land to accommodate growth through 2041. And then finally, commercial land, 159 acre land deficit inside the urban growth boundary. One of our land use efficiency measures is that Lynnfield identified their interest in putting 44 acres of land on their campus into C3 zoning and back into the buildable lands inventory. And so the city is in the process of discussions with Lynnfield and seeking a letter to that effect, and will adopt the revisions to the economic opportunities analysis to address that. And then McMinnville Landing includes a 44 acre retail center that will prioritize commercial uses. It's not necessarily going to be redesignated as commercial, but it will be there on policy for commercial uses. So about half of McMinnville's commercial land deficit can be accommodated through the land use efficiency measures above. And the reason it's probably a good idea not to necessarily go forward with an urban growth boundary expansion for commercial is that you've got opportunities for redevelopment and better use of underutilized commercial land, such as Long Highway 99. If you do an urban growth boundary expansion, then you take some pressure off of that to redevelop or infill. Commercial, more than any other type of development, tends to reinvent itself a little more easily. The economics of redevelopment for commercial work better than they do for a lot of other land types like industrial. So that's part of the reason that we suggest not doing a UGB expansion for commercial. And before I go into staff recommendations, I thought I would turn it back to the room and ask if there are questions.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to slide 12?
I think I can.
Nope, that's not the one I wanted. 13?
This one.
Boy, 14.
This one.
I'm not seeing the slide that I wanted.
What is on it that you're?
What I'm after is the one that had the, what was assumed for density in the housing per the southwest area plan, and that was it right there. Go back.
Okay, all right. There we go.
That one, that's the one I wanted. 14. Density assumption of 5.46 per acre. What has McMinnville historically built out at?
That was the overall average density, if I'm remembering correctly, right around there, of historical development from the housing needs analysis.
Yeah, so that is the historical development. If you recall, in the framework plan, we have identified land specifically for the R5 zone, which would just be multifamily and no other development, and it's not something that's been developed yet in McMinnville, so we don't include that in this discussion of the excess land. We're just using the overall buildout housing units per acre that we've had historically.
And do you know what the buildout was, what the density was in Baker Creek North?
I don't know what that was. It's higher than 5.46 and less than 10, though, if you don't include the 120-unit multifamily product. I can look, I can do some calc's and get back to you on that.
Yeah, it just, I think you've answered enough with that and where I'm kind of heading and where my concerns would be. I think that answers my question. And then I assume, based on everything you've said so far, the commercial deficit that we're facing, before, I thought I understood that it was after what was happening on Highway 18. Now it's saying will be offset somewhat by what's happening in the Innovation Campus. Did I misunderstand earlier?
So it's a, there's two, there's two ways to look at this. In our zoning ordinance, we have a clause in there that allows planned developments to have 25% of the overall parcel be used in a use other than the underlying zone. So based on the adoption of the three-mile lane area plan, the policy statement in there to have 33 net acres in commercial, which is 44 acres gross, that's less than 25%. So we're actually, and we've been directed to do a planned development for that area. So we're not actually rezoning the land to commercial, but there will be a master plan that will assign it to a commercial. And so that's the nuance that Beth was getting at, is we're not actually going to take action to change the color of the underlying map from blue to red, industrial to commercial, but it is bringing that much acreage online for commercial development in McMinnville. And so when we were talking about this, when thinking about how do you meet the commercial needs for the community, and we have a housing capacity analysis that we have to do again in 2031, we will, we will have, in terms of vacant commercial land, without picking up the little pieces around town, but the big piece with Lynnfield, the big piece at Mynville Landing, and then we have an additional 39 acres in the urban holding zone from the previous UGB amendment, we will have 125-ish acres of commercial land to develop over the next six to seven years. So we felt that that was enough before we did a checks and balances to see if we needed more, rather than go through the effort, time, and resources to do a UGB amendment.
I think maybe my question wasn't clear. What I remember is the previous conversations we had, that land deficit of 159 acres assumed commercial land out between the airport and the hospital. Now we're subtracting, again, so like we're double counting that land by saying we have 44 acres that we can use. I thought that was already accounted for when we got to the 159.
Let me look that up. So I see your question, which is, did we include that already in the buildable lands inventory?
Correct. And that's my memory.
Okay. So yes, I will look that up and see if we did. The recommendation that staff took to Planning Commission was, again, based on what I just described, which is, we're not going, we meet the needs for residential and industrial land with the land use efficiencies. We do not meet it with commercial, but we also don't recommend doing a UGB amendment just for commercial land when we feel there's enough commercial land that's going to need to be developed. But I'll get, I can see what you're saying is the actual deficit's higher if we're double counting that.
Correct. And I just want that to be clear.
Counselor Tocolsky thinks he found you the answer. Counselor Tocolsky?
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Chenoweth, it was 5.83 on Baker Creek South and 5.75 dwelling units per acre on Baker Creek North, if that helps. But that one decimal point does make a big difference.
We still have the Highway 18 question, right?
I'm looking up the, looking for the map. So I will bring that up in just a moment or till, unless Heather doesn't want me to do that.
Well, I think it's not on the buildable lands inventory map. I think it's in the table calculations in the EOA, but I'll look for it. I think it's in the table calculations in the EOA, but I'll look for it.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, just, you mentioned the Linfield University two projects, 44 acres of commercial and 33 acres of R4 residential. Is all 77 of the acres in the, where the Nature Trail is, or is, are there a few properties?
It's all, I don't know where the Nature Trail is, so I'm going to shoot a little blind here. It's all contiguous, and it's sort of like U shapes around the existing campus build-out. So it's the land south of Albertson's parcel, and it goes, it migrates behind that and comes up on the other side over by the railroad tracks in a U.
Right. I've mentioned this before, and this is outside of the scope of this meeting, but we have an interest in doing safe routes to school on that corridor. And I just wanted to kind of flag again that there's a really nice trail along that corridor on the Linfield property that might facilitate that safe routes to school if we can.
Okay, that's great to know.
Cover that circle when you're working out the planning.
Yeah, I'll note that we were working with Linfield on master planning the site. They want to send it out for a developer for a master plan development, and, but they've had administrative transition, so we're working through that process.
Thank you, Heather.
Any additional questions at this time? That's all we have right now.
Evan, would you like me to go on to the staff recommendation here?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So the staff recommendation is to proceed with land use efficiency measures as described for residential, industrial, and commercial uses, and to revisit the commercial land need by conducting a new EOA when the city adopts, develops its new HCA in 2032. So you'd probably be doing that work between 2030 and 2031, I would guess. And the actions to implement the land use efficiency measures are about pursuing that letter in agreement with Linfield, adoption of the airport master plan, doing remaining framework plan amendments. And we, I believe, got additional direction from DLCD staff to ensure that the, all the requirements are met, although perhaps staff is thinking about some additional, additional direction.
Oh, yeah, I think we, we had that meeting and got that direction, so nothing additional.
All right. And then the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to proceed with the land use efficiency measures as described and to revisit the EOA when the city next adopts a new HCA by 2032. And that is the end of what I have on this presentation.
And just to clarify, I don't think City Council gave us the direction on the recommendation, Planning Commission did, so we were coming to you to say.
Oh, I apologize, yeah, Planning Commission.
We're coming to you to say, you know, are we on the right track? If you want us to do a UGB amendment for the commercial land deficit, we would need to enact that right now and get that work going. If you don't, if you support the staff recommendation, the Planning Commission recommendation, we'll continue to move forward with the actions that we've described here.
Counselors? Sounds, go to moving forward on what your recommendation is. Any questions? Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, may I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
So Heather, you may be able to answer this better than anyone else. If we wait until 2032 for the commercial land analysis, how long does it take to actually conduct the analysis so that we'll have buildable commercial land at that point?
Oh, that's a great question. I would say you have to do the analysis, the UGB amendment, then plan the infrastructure for it and bring it into the city. So you're probably in a five-to-10-year window.
Okay, so with the 2032, we're out 17 years before we get approximately?
Before turning dirt?
Yeah, before you turn dirt on new commercial.
Probably, yes.
Okay, so the Planning Commission recommendation was to wait that duration?
We did, I think we had that conversation with the Project Advisory Committee and sort of worked through that a little bit. We have 127 acres right now, which is a lot of acreage for commercial development to move forward and have built out for the community. And so they felt that that was enough within that window. If, you know, we can, I'd have to ask the state if we could do a UGB amendment, let's, so playing it out. We have to get something in by March of 2026, and for us to get something in is going to be a big push, given the timeframe. But if we decide four years down the road, so let's say things are really successful, the McMinnville Landing builds out very quickly and people respond to it really well, and Linfield gets their master development going, and we start getting nervous about commercial land deficit, can we use this existing analysis to move that forward, or we would have to do a new analysis? Beth and Elizabeth, do you guys know?
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I know that cities do use the existing analysis for some period of time to move that forward. It's just when that starts to get pretty old, like five to 10 years old, that's when DLCD starts asking for a fresher analysis. I've done that recently for another city.
And may I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Keep in mind that we're in an appeal process right now with these analyses, both the economic opportunity one and the housing one. One of the contentions of appeal was that the data we're using, the population forecast we use for our analysis, is already dated. So I imagine that would come up in a future argument as well. The state upheld the city by saying we could use that population forecast for this analysis, but Beth is right. There will become a time when people feel that it's too stale.
And I did have one more question at this time, and it may be a lot to ask. If you take the 127 existing acres and divide that by 17 years, assuming that we don't do anything for that time period, that leaves us with seven and a half buildable commercial acres per year. You have any idea how many acres per year are, on average, are developed commercially within McMinnville?
I don't. And I'm trying to think if I can find that out in the next 20 minutes for you.
I'm just curious. It's just a quick math problem to figure out if it's going to put us in a deficit or not.
Yeah. But I would, I would keep in mind, so there's two other things at play here. One is, we're not picking up, when I talk about the 127 acres to develop that we have available to us, we're not picking up all the little pieces, too. So I don't know, Beth, if you can find that in the buildable lands inventory. And the Innovation Campus retail was not counted as commercial land in that. But, you know, the little one, the little smaller parcels inside the city. And then the other piece of it is, we had a discussion about the fact that we do have tired commercial corridors. I want to be careful about how I describe it, right? But by, you, we want to be careful that we don't open up so much commercial land that we're now creating sort of the haves and the have-nots in terms of the developments occurring and where the sort of attractive commercial is versus the nuisance commercial, if you want to call it that, and create that situation. And we also, you know, when you have tired commercial corridors, it, sometimes there's benefit to putting market pressure on redevelopment of those corridors as well, especially for higher-density commercial development. I would say the commercial development along 99 is sort of more representative of 70s, 80s sprawling shop, shopping centers, rather than sort of the more higher-density development that we see in other communities that are new developments along 99. So it was, it was trying to find the balance between those two pressure points, so to speak.
Thank you.
May I follow that up?
Counselor Peralta for, oh.
So just following up on the line of questioning, in terms of growth, I'm going to ask you to get your crystal ball out, Heather. What are we anticipating is the development window for the Southwest area?
So from today?
Yeah.
I would say we're not developing that any sooner than five years from now. What do you say, Jeff?
Yeah, based on some current infrastructure restrictions that we have, I'd say five years is probably accurate.
And then just, again, I'm not going to hold you to this, but if you were to guesstimate, how long do you think it takes to build it out?
Oh, I, I don't know. I don't even know if I want to put a guess to that. So, and the reason for that is it's large tracts of land, and if we have a lot of development pressure because it's taken us a while to put the infrastructure in the ground to serve the land, there could be a lot of supply pressure, and they could move it fairly quickly. If there's not a lot of supply pressure, it would be more phased and incremental.
15 years? I wanted to see this because if we're looking at 17.
It's like 15 plus. Our population trends are trending down in terms of population growth. That's what we're seeing, you know, as the boomer generation ages out. And if you think about land that's been in the city that we're building out now, so the West Hills has been in the city since, what, the 90s, maybe? And that's, and we're doing, we're finishing the last 392 lots of that, and that's 30-some-odd years, so.
Okay.
It takes time.
So my concern, and where I'm going with this, is if we got 17 years before we can move on more commercial land, and all that gets built out in that window, or is close to being built out in that window, the amount of pressure on the commercial land that we have is going to be rather intense.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so I guess.
It probably won't be all built out in that window.
Yeah, and that's where my concern is, is that we would have a tremendous amount of pressure on the commercial space we have if we've not expanded the commercial to match the needs of the citizens during that timeframe, which is kind of where we are now. So I'm a little leery just to drop the ball on this. So thank you.
Heather, you asked for the numbers from the buildable lands inventory on the small pieces.
Yeah.
And so it's probably very hard to see this, and I can zoom in, but I don't know what you considered small pieces. But you can see that, you know, in the less than five acres of vacant land for commercial, you've got nearly about 30 acres there. And then partially vacant land, you've got another 20-some acres there that may not have been in what you were counting before.
Yeah, so 157 acres.
Thank, thank you.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Beth, and it's a little bit, another one that's a little bit outside of the scope of the meeting, but it's really for you and your role at Echo Northwest. You work with cities all over the state on land use, right? I mean, almost every city works with Echo Northwest. Do you, do you make recommendations to the legislature on efficiencies for workflow? And the reason that I ask is that I get the sense that our planning department and serving on the council of governments, that a lot of the planning departments around the state have really been underwater by the amount of reporting that the legislature has added in the last few years. And I didn't know if, I know Echo Northwest has a lot of reports out there, and I didn't know if you had anything talking about the effect that that has on the ability to turn around housing projects, and if the, if the organization has recommendations for future legislative considerations to kind of take some of that pressure off?
I don't know of any reports that we have done specifically about that. I know that this is a topic that we have to, we have to be a little careful because we, we work for the state really pretty frequently. But I know that in our advice to state staff, and I know in discussions with various legislators, we're often making that point, that there's quite a lot of pressure on cities, especially with all the changes that we've had in the last six or eight years around legislation for housing especially. There's a different problem when it comes to commercial and industrial land, which is all the attention has been on housing, and so little of it has been on jobs. And so in some of the work that we've done with business, Oregon, it's really focused on that employment land need as well, and the need for better-paying jobs. So I would say that, that we do give advice. It's oftentimes a little less formal, and it's oftentimes ignored.
Thank you for that. Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Sal. I am asking those same questions. The, the metric that the analysis of commercial needs that it's based off of, is that considering the current trends of commercial businesses, that we are seeing needs for smaller but many more retail locations? There's less and less need for the big box with the amount of deliveries that come straight to our door. We're currently seeing Jo-Ann fabric space, Will Have Goodwill, as well as Rite Aid, where the amount of businesses that could go into those spaces are very limited going forward, I would imagine. And thus, I have left a question out there, but I'll just kind of agree with Heather in saying that those are the types of spaces that we're looking at that are tired. And encouraging redevelopment, especially in the standards that we're looking at today of smaller retail, much more enticing without the big seas of parking out in the front of them, would actually allow for a lot more retail, in essence, just in a smaller footprint.
Yeah, and that's a good point. You know, if you think about the economic opportunity analysis, there's two pieces in there. The commercial land need is described by employees, and then we also have the retail leakage demand in there, too. We did, you know, part of the analysis is looking at what future trends are. Now, keep in mind, we did this analysis work mostly during COVID, quite frankly, and things have changed, and they're changing today, right? I think there's a lot of people in the commercial sector who would tell you they don't know what five years from now is going to look like for retail and commercial. People are going to more experiences rather than large, vast spaces for product. But that hasn't transitioned entirely, so everybody's watching it. So that might be another reason to consider waiting a little bit. The other thing I'm thinking of in my head, and I don't know, Beth, if you would know how the state would respond to this, but I'm wondering if, if City Council wants us to do a UGB amendment for commercial land need, if we can ask the state for more time to submit that based on this work, like the end of next year, since we're meeting the housing needs analysis with land use efficiency measures?
I would imagine that, yes, you could, and this is my best guess, because the sequential process is really important for the residential piece, since you're not required to adopt a UGB amendment in the event that you have a commercial or industrial deficit. You know, you could finish up your sequential process while simultaneously looking at a UGB expansion for commercial and submit that after your sequential process is done. I mean, I would check with DLCD to verify that, but it seems like that is within the letter and the spirit of the law. And I want to step back to what you were saying about uncertainties. And so there's just enormous uncertainties about what's going to go on in the office market, for instance. So remember that commercial is a lot more than retail. Retail is a slice of commercial, but it's not a big one. So we've, you know, through COVID, we saw everybody go, you know, work from home. A lot of people work from home, and then, you know, gradual return to the office and more return to the office. More recently, people working hybrid. There's frankly not good data out there about how many people are working from home and what kind of industries, and even less about who's working hybrid. We do know that the retail, the office market is particularly weak at this point, and that retail has been an ongoing evolution with online shopping, so with retail demands shifting more, as Heather mentioned, to experiences. So there's, there's all of that going on, and in a lot of ways, the crystal ball becomes, I think, murkier for commercial. think, murkier for commercial, especially given the fact that commercial tends to adaptively reuse old tired spaces or redevelop spaces as needed. It's something that happens a lot more frequently. And this is, you know, too much pressure in your housing market certainly causes the kind of problems that we're seeing at this point. Not enough pressure in your commercial market, I think, results in languishing areas. So, you know, if you think about the hollowing out of the donut, so where your, your central areas are abandoned more because there's no pressure to redevelop them. So, you, you want to find a, a balance point, and that balance point should certainly consider, you know, your expected growth and, and how much land you have for development and redevelopment. And frankly, if you choose to do a newer EOA that would be based on newer information, which is really different now, you could turn around tomorrow and do that if you wanted to. So, you don't have to wait until 2032 to do that.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. Multiple questions from what you just said. The first is, doesn't the planning that needs analysis process kind of take into account that concept, excuse me, that concept of, of, of making sure that we have the right amount of commercial, residential, and industrial land as is needed to keep that balance in place? I mean, isn't that kind of the whole point of the planning process, that, that that land use numbers come up with?
Theoretically, yes.
So, if they're telling us we're-
I'm saying that there, there is some uncertainty in that, and there's more uncertainty now than there has been for a lot of years.
Okay. We, we have been sitting in McMinnville for a long time on a fairly large deficit of commercial land that's historically been going on, and, and, and I think has resulted in other pressures, such as a lot of folks never even bother to try to shop in McMinnville. They just leave town. And, and I think those kinds of pressures are, was, was well articulated when we went through these discussions in, in leakage numbers that were brought before us. The second question I had is, you, you said we could, we could complete the sequential UGB and then start a new UGB. That seems daunting to me. Am I missing something in this process?
Complete the sequential work plan and then start looking at a UGB expansion outside of the sequential work plan.
Yeah, so, so what I had asked was, I mean, what's looming in front of us is this sort of deadline with the state that was written into state law, and we negotiated a new deadline with DLCD for that, which would only give us six months to do UGB amendment, which is a fairly big lift to do. And so, my question was, to Beth, just brainstorming out loud, is we meet the March one deadline by providing all the stuff we need to provide to them. Housing needs are being met with land use efficiency measures. Here's the memo that says that. Industrial land's being met with the airport master plan update. Here's the memo that says that. We are going to move forward with a commercial UGB amendment, and we'll get that into you by the end of the, the calendar year, but it's not required as part of the sequential UGB work plan because that was focused mostly on housing. That was my question.
So, it's not, we're not saying we're going to start a whole new UGB process?
Using the same analysis.
Okay, thank you. That's, I feel much better about that.
Sorry?
I'm interested in getting away from an analysis into planning that is the planning that we've all trained to do rather than the data numbers. So, anxious to get there.
Okay, I think we're, do you have anything else on this part? I know, Evan, you had, didn't we have another section to go to?
We do have another section, but I'm gonna, sorry, Evan, be a disruptor.
Okay.
The most important decision we need from you tonight is really how to move forward with this piece of it, because we've already determined that we don't need the code amendments for the land use efficiency measures for this looming deadline of March one. So, if you need more time to vet that, ask questions, deliberate amongst yourselves to give us direction, I'd rather us use that time, sorry, Elizabeth, than to go through the proposed code, the code audit and what's come out of that. The code audit was part of our land use efficiencies work, thinking if we couldn't get it from other places, we'd try to look at how do we change the code to get it. So, we did a code audit. Based on the code audit, there's a lot of good changes that we would recommend the city pursue, but we don't need to pursue it for this particular work with this March one deadline. That's what we wanted to share with you tonight.
So, you're, let me just, so the actions to implement the LEUMs? So, the letter from Linfield, you need direction on whether we agree with those?
I need direction. The, the biggest question really is, do you want to pursue a UGB amendment for commercial land need? We, we've met it for housing and industrial, and we've met it by doing these land use efficiency measures that we will need to bring into you for action.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you. Heather, can you just re-articulate your recommendation? Because now, I, I thought I understood, but now I'm, I'm myself a little confused.
So, our recommendation was to go to the state with the land use efficiency measures, stating that we met the housing land need, the two hundred and two acres of deficit, with the following actions, and we walked through those tonight. Some of those actions we still need to take, which is amending the framework plan for the reduced amount of land that the McMinnville School District needs, as they provided to us, and to get the letter from Linfield saying that they're no longer need that property for their campus development, and they're going to put it into the private market. And then, and that we've met the industrial land need through the adoption of the airport master plan that showed that thirty acres of industrial land to be developed. So, we've met those two items, bringing those land use efficiency measures to the state and said, we've met the task in the sequential UGB work plan. Our other recommendation to you was, we, with, we can't get to the full recovery of the deficit shown for commercial land need through land use efficiency measures. So, our recommendation was, there's a lot of commercial land coming into this process through the Linfield land that's being added back to the commercial inventory, through the forty acres at the McMinnville Landing, and the forty acres that's for neighborhood-serving commercial that's identified in the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. That's a lot of acreage to be developing out for commercial land need over the next, till 2032. We're going to have to start a housing needs analysis process again in 2030, which is only five years away. And so, as we're mobilizing to do that, it's easy to do an economic opportunity analysis at the same time with the same system, and that we do a checks and balances then to identify if the commercial land need is an issue that we need to address.
Can I ask?
Yep.
Thank you. So, in order to do a new commercial land need, you would also need to do another new economic assessment?
Yes, and, and that was the, that was the discussion we had earlier, which is like the stale data discussion. So, if we wanted to do, you know, in twenty, if we don't, I think we could have the conversation with the state about doing a commercial UGB amendment and getting it in by the end of this, this calendar year. We have to meet with legal counsel to make sure everyone feels comfortable with that. But if we wanted to do a UGB amendment for commercial land deficit, let's say, three or four years from now, using the same analysis, I think there will be a lot of pushback that the data's too stale and we'll have to do an analysis again.
So, what if we look at it in the spring? So, you finish this work that needs to be in, and then we look at it in the spring. Would you still be able to use the current data? Because it's, she had thought it would last longer than that? I just don't know that I'm prepared to tell you to move forward on that.
What I can do, based on your question you just asked, is a next step could be that we meet with legal counsel and the state and see if that's even viable, that pathway, to do a commercial UGB amendment after March one with the same analysis, and what would the viability look like? Like, what's the timeframe for that? And come back to you with that answer.
I'm more comfortable with that personally.
In the near, we would want to do it in the near term, because if we can't use, we can't use the analysis past March one, I'd like to be able to share that with you so you can give direction otherwise.
Absolutely. Councilor Peralta?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. How do you feel about that suggestion, Heather?
About the, I've done two UGB amendments in, it's hard in McMinnville. How do I feel about that suggestion? I think, I think that if there's concern about not, not meeting the commercial land deficit and needing more time to think through whether this is the right step for McMinnville, which is the dialogue we're having, that pursuing that discussion with the state makes sense to me to give us more time. I'm really concerned, to be honest with you, I'd be really concerned about trying to pull off a UGB amendment in the next six months.
Yeah, I think it's unrealistic for the capacity.
We, we would have to put all staff into that and just make it, like, all staff into that and just make it happen.
Councilor Peralta has a follow-up?
Thank you. I just want to put my kind of position on the record on this. I'm more concerned right now about empty spaces that are commercial spaces in our town than I am about a deficit of spaces. I realize that that's not a permanent thing, but we have several restaurants on ninety, or at least a few restaurants on 99W, and several large box, big boxes that either are empty or will be empty, and I'm, I'm just really concerned about the effect that that has. So, I'm kind of mindful about Beth Goodman's comments about needing at least a little bit of pressure in the commercial space to encourage redevelopment so we don't end up with these ghost town centers. So, I'm definitely on board with doing something on this after the sequential UGB if it's needed, so revisiting it and to see if we, we need to do it in the spring. That makes a lot of sense to me, Mayor. I appreciate that suggestion, and thank you for your good work to the folks on the call, and Heather, you as well.
Councilor Chenoweth?
So, yeah, I would be in favor of you coming back with us and letting us know whether or not we can do it to November. I would be reticent, borderline not in favor of, if the answer is, maybe I shouldn't say this out there, but if the answer is no, I, I don't think I would want to push to make you do it in the next six months. That, that's where I would sit.
Any other councillor have input? Okay, I think that was your direction, Heather. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, so we'll work with Claudia and Adam for a future work session. They grab like twenty minutes of that time and come back to you with, with that discussion and sort of button it up.
Perfect. Thank you. Evan, do you want to move on with, we have a half hour, almost?
Yeah, Elizabeth, if you want to try to work through, I know it might be a little bit at a faster pace, but if we can try to do an overview of your audit and some of the findings.
Yeah, thanks, Evan. I'd be happy to give a, a summary version of the code updates. Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Elizabeth Decker. I'm with jet planning, and I've been working sort of in parallel with Echo Northwest, but with a focus on the zoning code. So, Heather sort of gave you the, the very big picture, which is that we, we started back in February, you know, knowing that we were working towards this March 2026 deadline, so wanting to get everything in place, examine all of our options, to see if there were parts of the zoning code, changes to the code that could add some more land use efficiencies to help meet particularly those residential land deficits that we are working with. So, I last came to you in February, and we talked about some like very initial code analysis observations and tried to get, talked about some of the directions that we could go, and that helped inform some future analysis of, or some additional analysis of, you know, if we made this code update, what kind of efficiency would that translate to in terms of, you know, a measurable acreage savings, additional unit capacity to, to count in those tables that Beth shared with you. And we started through that, but really, it quickly became clear that the acres for residential in particular were going to be found through these other actions, the, the list of changes with the Linfield site and the Prose Plan and some other pieces that the majority of acres could be found there. And so, we weren't really looking to pick up, you know, a few acres, a few units here, a few units there by changing setbacks. And so, instead, we sort of shifted the focus to see what code updates that we were looking at would be in the spirit of efficiency and, more importantly, be in alignment with the city's overall priorities in terms of the city's vision and the great neighborhood principles. So, we do have a handful of potential code updates that we've identified through this work, and I can give you the overview of those tonight. But I also just want to make you aware that we, we did this initial code analysis that was focused on the efficiency side of things, but we have a more comprehensive code update scheduled for this fall that's already contracted and planned. So, we will be getting into that later, and we'll have more detailed analysis, potentially some additional supporting code updates that could flesh out this package. But I have some initial ideas to share with you tonight. All right, so when we did this first initial code update that we started in February of last year, we really, again, were focused on that efficiency, and so we were looking at the residential zones, things that really affected how many units could fit within existing properties. Because of the way the state laws are written about efficiency measures, there's no sort of minimums that have to be met or specific targets. And because the initial additional analysis showed that we didn't, we weren't looking for additional residential capacity through these code updates, any of these updates we do will be, you know, more of a bonus in the spirit of efficiency rather than measurable, quantifiable efficiencies. We took a, a brief but much more limited look at commercial and industrial land uses at this time, just because they don't, it's not as easy to quantify how commercial and industrial land use standards affect the efficiencies, the number of jobs that might come out of a particular property. So, we don't have further updates or recommendations on that at this time. So, instead, we focused on the residential code. Some of the big pieces that we saw in this initial analysis that identified is, you know, as has been mentioned tonight, the city has already taken a lot of actions that increase efficiency and create more opportunities for different types of housing by permitting a broad range of different housing types, including middle housing, ADUs, and apartments. There's a number of residential zones, as well as office residential and the C3 commercial zone where those can be built. We, there were some questions earlier about some of the, the target densities and, and the density assumptions, the historical densities, and comparing those to the minimum lot sizes permitted in the residential zones. They're, they're right in line. You're seeing, you're seeing development similar to, you know, what's permitted. You're also seeing some apartments coming in at, at higher densities, so around more like thirty units per acre. So, those projects are coming online to provide more variety. But you are seeing the lower density zones, the single-family and middle housing, the R1 to the R3. Those projects are, are being built near the maximums that are permitted in the code, but some of the higher density zones, the R4 and the office residential, are not really seeing development towards the higher end of density that's permitted there. So, that's something we can consider addressing in code. Most of the dimensional standards for these higher density zones, the R4, R5, or the office residential and the commercials, that could be part of why you're not seeing average historical densities that are much higher there. Also took a look at parking minimums. You know, this is a, a broad statewide discussion, but also important to tailor to the McMinnville context. Parking minimums look real good for single-family and middle housing, but there could be some opportunities for multifamily to adjust those ratios. We know how, we heard how important open space requirements are in terms of great neighborhood principles and building out a very livable city and communities at, at the neighborhood scale. So, there are requirements for that in planned developments and multifamily that appear to be working and providing spaces that complement your planned public perks. And that planned development process is really emerged as, as a real area of focus to make sure that, because it's used so widely for residential projects, and it appears to be providing a good mix of variety of housing types. However, one thing that's unique, you know, that could be considered is that the, the planned development process right now doesn't allow any density bonuses over, you know, it's the same density that's permitted in the underlying zones rather than any additional flexibility there. So, considering whether, you know, if that process could be amplified a bit. So, we had a few initial code updates to consider in the spirit of these efficiency measures, but as Heather mentioned, not necessarily on the same timeline. These are not bound to that March first, 2026 update. So, this is more of a, an initial- So this is more of an initial preview, just a flavor of what they might look like, but we're not asking for approval or authorization to move forward with these at this time. So first piece is really just almost a housekeeping amendment. There have been some earlier changes to... recent changes to the code to remove the maximum density in the R4 zone. That was currently the highest density zone. The R5 zone also allows multifamily, and it just wasn't updated at the same time, so we think there's an opportunity to clean that up and for parity, remove that maximum density and better support multifamily development. As that R5 comes online, the R5 is planned for some of the urban holding areas. There's 36 total acres intended to be designated for that. Those haven't been mapped yet, so just making sure that we clean up the code so that it's ready for future development there. Next piece is looking at some of those minimum densities. As mentioned, the lower density zones, development patterns are really right in line with what's permitted, but some of the historic densities in the R4 and the office residential, we haven't seen R5 yet, but we presume that we want to achieve similar targets. The historic densities, you know, I think you saw the five-point something that was discussed in Slide 14. Getting a density like that in a zone that is one of your highest density zones means that there could potentially be additional density and additional homes that could be encouraged in those properties and to fulfill... better fulfill the purpose of those zones. So one tool to get there would be introducing a minimum density for the R4, the R5, and the office residential zone that could really push the mix of housing to include more middle housing and more multifamily development in those zones. I'm thinking about, you know, some different ways to calibrate that so that we're not creating a lot of non-conformities about any existing single-family homes, that there's still some opportunity to mix housing types, but nevertheless boosting up that historic density. So, you know, potentially looking at a 12 to 20 unit per acre range for a new minimum. Next piece on the form side is another potential reason that you might not be seeing the higher densities in the R4 zone, and, you know, again, setting up the R5 zone for success moving forward, is that the setbacks in the height standards currently in the zone are... could be working a bit at odds for each other. There are setbacks that apply up to 35 feet, and then as additional height is added, the setbacks increase. And so that could be one thing that's discouraging development up to the actual maximum height that is otherwise permitted in that zone, and so taking a look at both of those pieces and maybe bringing them closer into alignment of, you know, what is a height that we're comfortable with for these higher density zones as a community? What are the types of apartments and multifamily and developments that we're looking to see? And, you know, what are the heights and setbacks that we can live with that really set the form in the neighborhood context in a meaningful way? So adjusting the setbacks in height there. And then related on the setbacks, there's an opportunity in the commercial zone, the C3, which includes downtown, where apartments are permitted. However, just sort of an interesting quirk, the way the code is set up, there are zero-foot setbacks for most commercial developments with some additional buffering against residential zones. However, if you do apartment development in those same zones, you get kicked over to those R4 setbacks I was just mentioning, and so that greatly increases the setbacks in a zone where commercial can have zero-foot setbacks. And maybe there's an opportunity to apply the commercial setbacks to apartments, same as they would apply to commercial buildings, so the same form for both commercial and residential in those zones rather than increased setbacks for apartments could increase opportunities. Next piece, as I promised, I mentioned that parking is looking really good for middle housing. The city implemented the one space per unit minimum requirement as required, but that sort of leaves the multifamily requirement as a bit of an outlier. It's one and a half to two spaces per unit for a multifamily apartment. We know that there is high demand for parking in McMinnville, that a lot of apartments have multiple drivers and might be using... might really be using that much parking, but that that demand for parking is specific to individual developments, and it's the residents and the developers, and, you know, developers are trying to calibrate and make these units leasable. And so there has been a bit of a shift in the planning philosophy about what is the city's role in regulating parking and that it might not be... that the city really could set a lower minimum and then leave some additional room for developers to calibrate the parking to their specific sites. And so one opportunity could be to reduce the minimum parking for multifamily to one space per unit for parity with the middle housing minimum requirements, and then leave open some opportunity for that to be set for individual sites. And then the last piece of the code that sort of this initial pass identified is to look at those planned development standards. There's a lot that seems to be working well, a lot of projects that come out that allow this variety of lot sizes, a mix of housing, some open spaces, and are consistent with the great neighborhood principles. But since the density is bound by the underlying zone, there could be some additional opportunities to introduce some density bonuses, so lower minimum lot sizes, perhaps as a bonus, as a trade-off for some additional community amenities, maybe require, you know, if there's more mix of housing types or integration of other features, and so, you know, we'll be looking for your input about are there additional community features or design components of future neighborhoods that you think would be in line... would merit, so reducing the minimum lot size... the average minimum lot sizes and providing opportunity to integrate more homes in future neighborhoods. And if so, you know, what might that look like, and what are the kinds of bonuses that you would feel comfortable introducing into the mix? So let's, you know, the brief overview, the staff recommendation here is to continue working with Jet Planning, my firm, under, you know, as I mentioned, this contract's already been approved. We already have scheduled and are planning out the next stages on that more detailed code audit, but that will help identify code amendments. We'll work to develop that language. But in terms of time specificity, the recommendation is to not pursue those code amendments as part of the land use efficiency measures work, because again, we don't need to count them in that table in terms of acres and units. So instead, to package the amendments with any additional work that comes out of the code audit, to do a more comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance at a future date. And the planning commission's recommendation was consistent with the staff recommendation. So with that, I will turn it over to you all for any quick questions while we're still enjoying this work session together. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? We have no questions. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. And then just one last bit. Evan, did you want to talk... or Heather, did you want to talk through this last slide? About next steps?
Well, and the next steps might change a little bit. The first next step will be to answer the question that you've asked of us tonight and bring that back to you in a work session, but with that said, we will be putting the steps together that's necessary to adopt those land use efficiency measures, the amendment of the framework plan, the adoption of the airport master plan, and the action from Linfield so that we can change the buildable lands inventory and try to bring that to you as one package here in the... it looks like in the November-December time period so that we can move these things forward and up to the state. I also wanted to follow up on your question, Counselor Chinowith. Great memory, and I appreciate the fact that you were following the UGB process so well. Going back through the documents, in that first UGB amendment that we did in 2020, we did identify that 40-acre policy statement for the innovation campus as a land use efficiency measure for commercial acreage, but since we never actually took the action and changed the color of the map, when we were updating our economic opportunity analysis for the buildable lands inventory, we did not include it, so it wasn't included as commercial land. And so it's not double-dipping, but that was a great memory to sort of trigger that thought that we used it in the first round and we haven't used it in the second round. Until now.
Okay. Is there anything else? All right. I guess any other questions? Nope? All right, so then I'm going to close the work session at 6:50, and we will be back at 7 o'clock with council.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, now that we've talking about dry cleaners, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. And Claudia, could you please do a roll call?
Senator Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Tokolsky?
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Geary, I don't see him on Zoom yet. Counsel President Peralta?
Present.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you. If you're able to stand, please stand for the pledge. I have asked our attorney, David Lightberg, to lead us in the pledge tonight. It's okay. We have one change to tonight's agenda before we begin. Staff has asked to remove Item 6, which is the OLCC application for stir-crazy cocktails. That has been removed from the consent agenda and the agenda has been revised and sent out earlier today. Now, we're going to move on to community member comments. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision, or that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder, and once it's your turn, she will call on you. Claudia, do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
And no one on Zoom or phone? Okay. All right, so now we're going to move on to our presentations, and we have McMenville Water and Light General Manager, John Dietz, almost called you Don Dietz, John Dietz, here to present. Hi, John.
Hello, ma'am.
Good to see you again today.
Good evening. So, had quite a few things happen in the last six months at Water and Light. So, we, Mayor Morris and I, have had conversations with a number of the cities on future regional water. That discussion will continue and will be continuing for quite a while as currently we only supply one city, which is the city of Lafayette, with additional water. So, we do have an interconnect with the city of Carlton, so we can supply Carlton, but they currently have a contract with us, so we do not supply water to them. We do have the ability to actually continue the existing pipeline we have that goes down Highway 18 to supply Dayton and potentially Dundee in the future. That has been set up. Next slide. Facility project, we continue on that project. We've completed our schematic design and we are in design phase right now. We're hoping to see a rough order of magnitude estimate next week, so we'll see where we're at and the contractor, so we're doing a CMGC contract, so construction manager, general contractor, so we will see what the estimate, the first estimate is hopefully next week. One of the things that we, the commission, has made a decision on is the warehouse addition. We are looking at using what's a product called mass plywood, which is plywood panels essentially glued together and thicker panels, so probably somewhere in the three to four-inch thickness for those panels. We're also looking at using some of our watershed timber to make those panels. We're looking at potentially up to 65% of the wood would come from our watershed, which would be about a million board feet. Our sustainable yield is about four and a half, so it's a small percentage of our total yield. We do have an area where we're looking at manufacturer, Pharaohs, which they're in Lyons, Oregon. They are looking for logs no larger than 15-inch diameter. We do have an area that we are looking at that would pretty much fit that pretty well. That is a continuing discussion that we're having, and so hopefully we will use a substantial portion of our wood. Next slide. We're continuing on the electric side. Back in 2019, we purchased about four and a half miles of 115 KV transmission from the Bonneville Power Administration. We've replaced about one and a half miles, we'll add another, we'll be up to close to two miles by the time we're done with this project. This project is out between Baker Creek and Bertano Lane, where we're replacing some of the 65-year-old poles installed in 1965 with newer poles. So, that project will continue through the next couple of years. We tend to do about 15 to just under a mile every year, so probably in 2028 we'll be complete, 2029 with that project. And then also, as part of that, one of the resiliency measures we're doing is all of the corner structures will be self-supporting steel. They will not have down guys because that's a risk to the system. Those down guys can be hit by either vehicles or farmers or whatever and can cause damage to the infrastructure, so those will be self-supporting steel poles. Next slide. Water crew just completed water main replacement on 27th Street, replaced some ductile iron pipe. We have another area that we are targeting right now. We've had four water main breaks in the last eight months, and they're what's called full circle breaks, where the pipe just breaks in two, and it's all within probably a couple hundred feet of each other, and so that will probably be targeted for next replacement next year. And again, that's cast iron, and that typically is a problem with cast iron, is it either fractures longitudinally or it actually full circle breaks. So, that is going to be a priority for us next year. We did our annual watershed tour this year. We do those every year. We actually did, and there's another slide, we did a second tour specifically with legislators looking at the steel mill and our electric system as well, because there is a number of issues with electric right now, especially concerns about the demand that is, that we're beginning to see, especially tied to data centers, large loads. They're estimating within the next five to 10 years, you could see a 30% increase in electric demand. We have not seen that here. The thing, we do have an advantage here, we do have additional capacity on our local system here that is not utilized right now, so we actually are in better shape than a lot of other utilities as far as our transmission, our local transmission grid here. Next slide. And this was the tour we did, that's actually our Baker Creek substation, which we rebuilt in '22, '23, and added a second transformer to that yard. So, that was our most heavily loaded substation at about 27 megawatts, so we've actually split that now between the two transformers. And that substation is actually designed to take pretty much any component out without having to take the whole yard down, so that was part of the reason we did that in that substation. Next slide. Water or electric rates? So, commission just completed a review of electric rates. We saw, starting October 1 of this year, an 8% rate increase from BPA on power and 18% on transmission. To put that in terms, we're probably looking at somewhere between $3 to $4 million of additional cost to us. Our total cost, our total BPA purchases are somewhere around 70% of our electric system costs, so about $32 to $34 million is, goes to the Bonneville Power Administration of about $46 million. So, most of our costs are tied directly to our power supply. Commission did make the decision to keep the rate under 5% increase and spread that out over the last three years of this current rate period, and then we will be starting a new rate period or a new contract in October 1 of 2028, and the commission will probably be signing that sometime into November timeframe, October, November timeframe. BPA will be signing in December. Next slide. Commission also approved the purchase of three substation transformers for just under $5 million. Two of those transformers are allocated for Cascade Steel. They're banks, three and four at the Windishaw Substation. Those are, happen to be our oldest transformers in the system, so they're 1977, 1980, so 45 to 46, 47 years old. We did, you can see there, the lead times were 52 months, so almost five years. We're able to shorten that lead time to, it looks like we're hoping for fourth quarter of 2027, and we're going to continue to work with the manufacturer to shorten that as much as we can, because the way these contracts work is they are tied to material indices, so oil, copper, and steel. And so, the sooner we get the transformers, obviously, the lower the cost would be. So. Next slide, Claudia? And then, like I mentioned, the provider of choice contract, so that contract will run from 2028 to 2044. Not quite 20 years, but that's the maximum term that Bonneville can sign as a 20-year contract, and they will be starting, and we don't know what the rates will be yet, but it will be starting in October 1 of 2028. So, hopefully, we can keep the rate increases down. There are a lot of pressures on Bonneville right now, especially tied to transmission because of the constraints in the transmission system. Yep, that's it. So, questions?
Any questions for John? I do have a question from Counselor Payne.
Thank you. You took control of my microphone. I was just curious what Mackaranon Light's doing to prepare for the winter. Just, we've had some crazy, crazy winters.
Yeah, we have a lot of crazy winters lately, it seems. So, one of the things we do is we start actually ordering materials this time of year for our winter, and we actually have what we call storm stock, where we actually have additional materials onsite for this, for this time of year. We'll also be meeting with our group to start looking at what things we need to do to accomplish, you know, making sure we have the lights on. And then, the other thing we'll be looking at, and we've done this in the past, is mutual aid. We typically have done mutual aid, but we typically give the aid, we don't typically receive. So, in, yeah. So, in 2024, the January ice storm in 2024, we did not have very much here. We had a crew down, a large crew down at Springfield Utility Board, down in Springfield for two weeks, helping them restore power. They lost, they had 80 poles go down. And that was all due to ice and trees, so. And they actually had, it hit twice. So, they had the first time, and then it refroze again and did more damage the second time.
So, I noticed Asplund is doing some trimming. Is that part of the kind of winter prep, or is that just ongoing maintenance?
So, one of the things we've done to, to help is we actually have put on a second brushing crew. Prior, we only had one brush, brushing crew, we now have two, and they are actually going through and looking for specifically areas where we think we may have issues and trying to get those trees down. Typically, what happens is in the winter, trees go down, and then people get kind of wound up because they want to keep their trees, but when the trees start going down, they're more interested in getting the trees out, so we try to come behind those storms and see if we can get extra trees out of the, out of the system.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any appetite yet to increase our supply of power that, in the conversations you've had?
So, for us right now?
I mean, more statewide?
Yeah, well, the challenge is, one, Oregon has a constitutional ban on new nuclear, so we can't put nuclear in, and two, no new gas. So, that leaves us with only really two options, wind and solar. Best wind and solar sites are not on this side of the state, they're on the east side of the state, and what you need to get it to us is more transmission, which we don't have. And so, the constraints are the transmission system. And probably, the biggest issue is site, citing and permitting for new transmission can take. And I'll give you an example, there's a line called the B2H line, that's Oregon to Hemingway, Idaho, 500 KV line, planning started for that in 2007, and they're just getting to construction now. And that is one of the biggest challenges that the electric industry has right now, is actually having adequate transmission. To, the reason why nuclear and gas is important is wind and solar are variable resources. They don't provide energy particularly when you need it, so you need another resource to back them up, gas or nuclear.
Thank you.
Other questions? John, can you just, did you say what the timeframe is for the new building?
The new building, we're hoping to be in construction by next summer. So, hopefully, I'm hoping May or June of next year.
And you're thinking about how many months to?
So, one of the things that we've talked to the contractor about is actually physically moving out of the building. That would cut seven months off the construction time, so we'd go from 18 months to 11 months of construction. So, we're actively looking for a site to relocate to.
Awesome. Thank you for all you do, I appreciate it. I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, I do want to state for the record that Counselor Geary is now on Zoom.
Thank you. And I have, we are going to have Judge Poole, is he here?
Yeah, he's on.
Going to do it online? Okay, I thought, don't get to see him? Okay, so Judge Poole, you are up. Always like to see you in person.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, just like the little commercial. All right, so, over the past year, the court has been, been percolating along, actually fairly comfortably. We've had some big successes, we've had some challenges, and I'm just going to follow along on the, the report that I submitted in a packet. For most of this past year, we've been down by one-half to two-thirds strength for our court clerks. That's kind of important because, just because of the nature of the building where we hold court, where you are right now, we really need two people out front to check people in and to check them out. We need someone to set up payment plans. We have a prosecutor, we have a uniformed police officer working as a bailiff, and we're still using physical files, and we literally need somebody running back and forth. And so, with, being short, we've even had an armed police officer running files from, from the dais to, to out front. Things are getting better. The city was able to get a part-time clerk who's now full-time, so now we're up a little bit, and there's another full-time clerk who, I guess they just closed out the applications, and they're going to be going through that. So, it's a challenge, it hasn't, it hasn't killed anything, it's just a, just a challenge. Success has been jail. You know, by statute, whenever someone is arrested and held in custody, they have to be seen by a magistrate within 32 business hours. And what we do is, we have someone at the jail every day of the week. On non-court days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, one of the senior clerks goes down to the jail with a cellphone. They'll call me, and then I hope by what they call simultaneous transmission with a person in jail, I'll conduct the arraignment, I'll make a release decision, the clerk will present them to the prosecutor's office if they're interested, and many times, we'll just have a plea and sentencing right then and there. On Wednesdays, myself and one of the senior clerks will physically go to the jail. On Wednesdays, myself and one of the senior clerks will physically go to the jail. The jail's been fantastic. Uh, the jail commander, Captain Brown, uh, actually, uh, set up a, um, a room that we can use, it has a pass rule, we can go in, sit down, they bring the folks in, we can talk to them, go through the same thing, arraignment, release decision, uh, if they're interested in the prosecutor's offer, and then a plea and sentencing, or assign a, uh, a lawyer for them. Uh, it's been wonderful, and it's been working fantastically. Um, we, uh, of, of course, we're limited on time because we only have court on Wednesdays, but we've managed to, um, uh, basically have specialty courts in amongst of what we're doing. And one is, uh, one big area that I think has been working good is, uh, mental health. Uh, the county has been kind enough to provide us with, uh, member of Yamhill County Behavioral Health to actually come to court. And, uh, to ensure that the folks who need to go over there are going over there. It's so nice of me to sit up on the dais and point, you see that nice lady over there? That's the one you want to see. And, um, we, we, there's been one gentleman who has severe memory problems. And, um, we've, uh, developed a partnership with Encompass, and the folks from Encompass often will go pick him up from breakfast, wherever he's having that, and take him either to mental health or to the court itself. And we give him a reward, he has something like 57 open files, and so he comes to court and prosecutor say, you know what, I want to dismiss this one, one case. These are all bottom-line criminal trespass, things like that, and it's working out really well. Um, the other thing that has really worked out well is we've had, there's been, in the past year, too, um, uh, individuals who were continually, it was like every other day they were getting arrested and they, they weren't doing well at all, but they weren't committing such, uh, serious crimes that they would go to circuit court. And so, um, I, I, I got a little creative, and I noticed that, um, one of the ways that you can initiate a civil commitment, either a two-person hold, a two-police-officer hold, a physician's hold, and another is called a magistrate's notice. And there's nothing that says you have to be a circuit court judge to initiate a magistrate's notice. So I've done that, and I'll, what happens is I'll file a magistrate's notice, I'll include, um, a declaration from the city prosecutor and a defense lawyer. We send that to the mental health department and the circuit court. And so far, two folks, um, have been, um, civilly committed. But what that means is that gets them into the, the mental health system. And, uh, one lady was, uh, she was so bad, she had a traumatic brain injury plus a bunch of other stuff. She came back from, uh, the state hospital, and now she's in an apartment, she's living a, a decent life, and she's even been, um, volunteering, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, working as a peer counselor at Provoking Hope. We couldn't ask for any, any better outcome. Um, the other sort of specialty court, I, I call it that, I don't know, and that's all of those prohibited camping, uh, charges. Um, our prosecutor, and I have to hand it to her, she, she developed a, um, a three-tier system that we've been using. Um, and, and the thing is, is that people got tired of getting arrested for prohibited camping and going through the process, and I've noticed that the prohibited camping charges have dropped significantly. But the way it works essentially is the first time someone gets a citation, uh, the offer is, um, go to counseling, uh, we'll send them to Provoking Hope, they need to go there three times to learn about how they can get into some kind of, um, of, um, housing. And then they come back, they show a letter from Provoking Hope, okay, they've been, the case will be dismissed. Second time it happens, all right, again, we'll off, uh, they need to do work crew this time. And, um, there's a, uh, it's now, um, a conviction, but as a violation. And then the third time that, that happens, there's jail involved. There's a conviction and there's jail. And, um, like I said, whether it's, uh, that system or the, um, uh, the additional areas, the, the transit, uh, center that's, uh, that's been available, but I've noticed that the number of, um, of, uh, prohibited camping cases have gone down significantly. And then lastly, is our, um, our biggest challenge is trial days. Um, there, there's a requirement by statute that a misdemeanor case needs to be done, um, within two years. If it's somebody that, and that's for someone who's out of custody, somebody that's in custody, we got to give them a trial within 60 days. Um, what we're finding is, um, in the way, someone, sometime in the past, um, when the court went from two days a week to one day a week, uh, the first Wednesday is either traffic or criminal, the second Wednesday is traffic or criminal, I forget which one is which, third and fourth in that form, and then the fifth Wednesday of the month is our trial day. Well, there's, that means we only have four trial days a year. Uh, we tried to bunch up, um, four or five trials in, in hopes that at least one will go because defendants have a tendency of, of pleading out on the courthouse staffs or, or something like that. We're working on this. Um, and, and the problem is that witnesses move on. I mean, sometimes physically, they moved away, and the city doesn't have a case. And so, um, our prosecutor has to dismiss, or I think it was one day last summer, I had dismissed like five cases because we, uh, the city wasn't able to, um, uh, continue with those. So we're thinking of taking, just dedicating one of the other days, uh, a, a month, either a traffic or criminal day, and turning that into a trial day. I don't know what else we can do without, uh, additional, uh, days of, uh, a quarter, uh, a month. Anyway, that's about it. Um, I'm open for any questions that anyone might have, or...
I have a question. So on one of your items, you said that the second time they would go to counseling and a work crew. I didn't think we had a work crew anymore. Can you tell me about that?
Oh, no, my gosh, are you kidding me? Well, the county, uh, uh, probation department runs a work crew.
They do, still.
And they are kind enough to accept our folks, and it works so well. And, um, uh, our, our prosecutor will give people an opportunity like an undefferred sentence. Uh, you pay a certain fine, you do so many days of work crew, she'll dismiss the case. She does that for first time, you know, low-level, uh, uh, criminal cases. Um, we had a, a meeting with them a couple of years ago, they would love, they need to contract with, uh, government, governments. And right now, the only government that's contracting with them is, um, Yamhill County. But, but if the city wanted to contract with them, they would have people, uh, uh, cleaning out parks and stuff like that, they're looking for work all the time. But it works wonderfully because I'll give somebody, uh, an order to go to the, the, um, the probation department, and it's, it's, uh, it's an alternative to jail, and I make that clear to them. And then they'll come back two or three months later, because I give them lots of time to do it, and when I get a bunch of excuses, um, they get the, they get the underlying jail sentence. And I've, um, this, I, I remember one, one day, we sent three people to jail who, um, they didn't do their work crew, and there's accountability, so it works out really well.
Do you find that most people do do the work crew, though? I mean, when you assign them?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
I, I, I don't know if they, we don't keep stats on, on that, I'm sorry. But, um, I'd say most people do, and they're giving back to the community.
That's great.
Um, and the, the probation department, if someone is physically unable to do something, they'll, they'll assign them, uh, like a community service or answering a phone or something like that, so. But the key is the folks in the probation department are monitoring them. And, uh, so it's wonderful.
Oh, that's great. Anybody else? All right, I have a, Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Judge Poole, for your work in putting this together. We always, we do enjoy hearing from you. Um, this question is maybe just to kind of put in, a bug in, in terms of city manager Garvin's ears. I'm just curious about the cost for an additional day of, per month for trial days to make sure that we're not losing out on those, because four a year is wild. And four a year, you can't hardly, you can't meet the 60-day requirement with four a year.
Fortunately, um, the, the folks in the jail tend to be more interested in, in accepting some kind of an offer than, than going to trial. I've, I've, I've thanked, uh, thanked the Lord every, every, every time, um, somebody says they want a trial, and then we'll check up on them in a couple of weeks, and they've, they've changed their mind. But, um, it, it, it shouldn't be like that. But what's been beating us down is, is, is the budget. Um, now, the budget committee's been really good to us this year with, um, budgeting for the, the full-time clerks and the, um, the updated, uh, computer system. Um, so, you know, we'll take it baby steps, and we work with what we got.
Any other questions? Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Judge Poole, I just wanted to say thank you for implementing the two specialty courts that you have. That was, uh, you, I remember when you first presented that to us a couple of years ago, and we were really enthusiastic about it, and even without the level of resources that we'd hoped to give your department, you've been able to at least add those. So we really appreciate that, and please pass that on as well to your staff. We know they're doing a lot of work.
I'll, I'll do it, and, and I just want to give a shout out to, um, the folks that are helping us out, because it's not just someone from, uh, uh, Behavioral Health that comes, but we, we have someone from Provoking Hope there every court session, and, uh, we got someone from, uh, Encompass there. And it's just been absolutely wonderful. For me, sitting up on the bench, the point and say, see that nice lady over there? That's the one you want to see. It's fantastic. And, um, uh, so it's, it, it, it has really helped us tremendously in, in the, we're, we're blessed. When I, when I talk with other judges, um, they don't get the same kind of support, community support that, uh, we have here, so I'm, I'm really thankful.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Judge, I would echo the, the nice words of, of my colleagues here. Um, I'm gonna, um, double down on the question you were asked that you politely declined to answer. Um, what, what, what do you, what do you, can we get either via email later or now an idea of what it would cost to have another day a month added, not, not every week, but a month, added for the purpose of fixing these trial dates?
Um, okay, I'm way out of my lane. Because the, uh, the clerks, uh, uh, belong to the, the finance department, and oddly enough, the finance department, uh, submits the budget, so I don't know. I, I'm just, I just show up and, and make the big decisions. Uh, so I, I, I couldn't tell you, and I can't, I don't have access to that kind of information. I know someone who does, but...
Um, if, if, his interim, interim manager's not in here, but he'll be listening to this later, so we'll, I'll double...
He's online.
Oh, is he? So let's get that plug in there to get that, I'd love to get that number back to us. There he is.
Oh.
Oh, there's Katie, maybe. There we go, Director Henry's there, too, excellent.
Okay, you're in trouble now, Katie.
It sounds more like I'm the one that's in trouble.
No, I, I'll take that as a, as a takeaway, and I'll be working, um, with Jason on, on figuring those numbers out and, and getting more information from the judge on the specifics on, on what that would look like, how many hours we're talking, and things like that. And I can come back to you with some costs.
That'd be great. I mean, I don't want to get the judge's hopes up, but at the same time, I think we need to have the information so we can make a, an accurate decision.
Absolutely.
Just for clarity, Counselor Chenoweth, are you looking for that in the upcoming, uh, budget cycle in March and April, May?
Um, I think maybe I would like it sooner, um, so we could perhaps have a supplemental discussion if it's within the realm of possibility.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Counselor Chenoweth, I can encourage more people to ask for trials if you like.
He'll be that nice man sitting back there.
Counselor Tocolsky?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Judge Poole, thank you again for your service, it's very much appreciated, your just attitude and your approach that you take, so I personally appreciate it. The question that I had was with respect to Provoking Hope. Most people within our city know Provoking Hope to be more of a blue, well, what used to be a blue, uh, ambulance needle exchange. Could you explain a little further about how they provide counseling and how they're a part of this, uh, camping system?
Um, you know, I've been to visit them personally, um, I forgot how many times. Uh, I've never seen any, 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 uh, needle exchanges at all. What I, what I see is folks who have been in the system, that have lived through the system and have overcome their own, um, uh, their, uh, their, their own challenges. I, I, I'm not eloquent enough to, to say what I want to say, but, um, so when I send someone to Provoking Hope, they're talking to someone who's, who's lived the life. And, um, uh, they seem to have, it seems, those folks seem to have more, um, impact than, than some ugly guy in a robe sitting up on a dais. Um, so, um, they, they've been so, so helpful.
Thank, thank you, Judge Poole.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you so much, Judge Poole. We appreciate having you here.
Oh, thank you. I'm, and I apologize for not being there in person, um, um, but we'll, we'll see you all soon.
We'll try to come visit you on Wednesday.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Okay, now we're going to move on to advice and information items, so reports from counselors on committees and board assignments and department head reports. And I am going to start with HR Director Vicki Hedges.
Thank you, Mayor. This past couple of weeks, I've been busy with, um, some employee performance management, um, taken up quite a bit of my time there. Uh, also been working with, uh, Director Hansaker on some training opportunities, uh, planning for succession, some succession planning that he has in his, uh, department, and then also just on some targeted trainings, uh, for his group. And then, uh, coming up, we'll be working on reviewing our rates for paid leave organs, so that will be, uh, good to see if we can get a better rate on that.
Thank you. Public Works Director Jeff Hansaker?
Yes, so for facilities, uh, we are getting quotes right now for replacement of the laminate for the dais, so we're working on that. Just want you to know. And then, keeping with the theme of Civic Hall, we got the message, it is very cold in here, we are looking into...
Thank you.
... optimizing the system and finding out what the optimal temperature is. Obviously, it's warmer than this. Um, as far as street maintenance, our street crew, uh, has wrapped up paving, uh, that we do in-house for the year. We did about 110 tons of asphalt this year compared to 95 tons last year. That's a roughly about seven NBA basketball courts worth of paving we did in-house. And then we placed about 13,000 pounds of mastic, and in keeping with my basketball theme, that's about 60 NBA players. Um, one area that we are going to have to do some new, um, asphalt, uh, we have a stormwater sinkhole going on at, um, it's small, but it's at Michael Book and Andrews, at Michael Book and 18th. There's a storm line there where the gaskets look like they dried out, and so we had a lot of infiltration, and so we got to repair the storm line there, and then repair the, uh, roadway and sidewalk on top of that. And then a couple of engineering division updates, uh, next week, they'll be doing the paving on Cypress to finish out that change order that was recently approved. Uh, door and hangers have been put up for all the residents along there, so there'll be some, uh, closures except for local traffic through there next week while that's occurring. And then I also wanted to give the council an update on the safety audit that we're doing for the intersection at Cypress and Old Sheridan. The traffic engineering consultant has completed their analysis, and they had a preliminary meeting with the city engineer. They are currently working on... They are currently working on compiling the information, creating some exhibits and coming up with some short-term, mid, medium-term and long-term improvements to improve safety at that intersection. I need to discuss with the city manager how we share that information with council. It's a little different to do those analyses, but we know that that's an area that the community and the council is very interested in, so we're going to find a way to do a presentation or something for you at an upcoming council meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Counsel Chenoweth, did you have a question? Okay, all right, just didn't want to miss out. Information Systems, Scott Burke.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Couple of things we've been working on in IS. This Thursday evening, we're going to have a email slowdown after hours. We've been planning some backend changes that have been overdue for a while, so nobody's email is going to get lost anywhere, but from about 5:00 to 9:00, it's going to move a little bit slower and inverse as we kind of move things around and get them more dialed in the way they should be. Other than that, we've been working on, working through the review process in the IS department, getting our formal reviews done, and we have some computers ready for a few counselors who've got emails to catch up with us. So, go ahead and just get back and schedule something with Megan or I and we'll get you taken care of.
Great, thank you. Claudia Cisneros, City Recorder.
Yes, first I want to state for the record that I will be amending the packet to include a letter from Loretta Johnson. It became a serial communication when it was sent to the council and then it was a reply all. As a reminder, please do not reply all to emails as that creates the ongoing serial communication. So, I will be entering that into the record for tomorrow. And then, for next week, the joint meeting with Mac Water and Light has been postponed to February of 2026, but council will still be meeting at 6:00 PM for a special called Executive Session and will be meeting here in the conference room.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go, I'm going to come back to you, Scott. Cord, Chief Wood.
Green light's on, is this, oh, it is. There we go. It won't shut off, so I was a little dubious. Lots of things going on at the Police Department. We're continuing to move forward with the implementation of the new RMS system. We were meeting with the company that's supplying the new system over the last couple of weeks to design how certain aspects of the system are going to function and work. We've been working with IS on the implementation of a system that's going to help manage our incidents from force to pursuits to employee-involved crashes, citizen complaints, all of those things so that we can manage them a little more efficiently and a little more professionally. We have implemented, one thing I really wanted to mention during my time tonight was we've implemented a new award at the Police Department and I want to recognize some of the good work by one of my staff. Everybody's aware that over the last several weeks, we've seen an uptick in the number of graffiti incidents across the community and in response to that, the department entered into a partnership. Well, one of my officers took my idea that, hey, let's see what we can do with a partnership with local businesses to try and abate some of these issues. And he took that on and he did, he did a great job and he did it in a very timely fashion and we were able to respond to an immediate concern of the community. So, we've implemented a new kind of award at the Police Department and it's called a Challenge Coin Award and it's meant to recognize those good works by our staff that maybe don't rise to the level of a Medal of Honor or a Medal of Valor or a lifesaving incident, but they deserve recognition for the good work that they do and the impact that they have on the community. So, Officer Kendall Johnson was the officer who stepped up and took on the graffiti abatement partnership project and this last week, I presented Kendall with the department's first Challenge Coin Award. So, he receives a certificate and he receives McMinnville Police Department Challenge Coin and a copy of that certificate goes in his personnel file for the duration of his time here with us at City McMinnville. So, very proud of the work that he did for us and I look forward to continuing to recognize our staff for the good work that they do.
I love that and I love that he did that, but I also love that you have that program to recognize that and help morale.
Mayor, could I jump in real quick? I just want to thank Cord for adding this award. This is part of the survey we did with the Police Department a couple of years ago and one of the things that they requested was more recognition and so this is an effort to improve the recognition that our officers are receiving.
Great, good job.
I guess one of the things that I didn't mention is that many times, those bigger awards that I mentioned, the lifesaving, the Medal of Honor, Medal of Valor, usually like Director Hedges was saying, they take time to receive them. They're usually presented at an annual event where a big deal is made out of them and rightfully so, but sometimes the presentation of those aren't very timely. Within a couple of weeks, I was able to present this to Officer Johnson and that's the intention behind it. It's meant for the immediate recognition when people do good things.
Great, thank you. Director Heather Richards.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Wanted to remind you that we have a community design workshop for the Southwest Area Plan here on Saturday, here in this building from 10:00 to noon. This is a great opportunity for anybody in the community to make meaningful impact on about 400 to 500 acres of land. That's in our urban growth boundary that's due to be developed here over the next five to 15 years. So, encourage you to come. The community design workshops are a lot of fun, interactive and impactful for people. Also, in your meeting packet, you have a letter about a particular property that we're working on in code enforcement and I wanted to give you an update on that. It's been a property that's been in our program, in and out of our program for years. Our code compliance officer has been working with the tenants of the property as well as the property owner on remediation. We did have it set up to be abated by a third party vendor. For us to do that, it costs the city about $5,000 to bring that in and we typically end up leaning the property because the property doesn't have the means to pay back the city for that. But the code compliance officer and myself have been working with the property owners on trying to get as much of that cleaned up as possible with them and their friends and family. And there has been visible improvements over the last two weeks there, so we wanted to give them another week to sort of finish up what they could do. We do have the vendor scheduled to go in on the 22nd if they're not able to fully clean it up, so wanted to bring that to your attention. And we're working with another property in town as well with similar issues in a similar way. And then, lastly, I wanted to share, last week was six months since our planning manager's hire, David Bernicker. It's a new position for the city and so I'll be working with him over the next six months on what that looks like for restructuring our planning division and decision-making processes. We're going to formalize a lot of that. And then, also working with Jeff Hunsaker and the engineering team on development processes in the Community Development Center as a whole and putting together some formal communications that we can share with the community as to how to navigate development processes as you work through a land use application or building permit. We're excited to be able to put the time into that so that we can, we've been talking about this for years, but being able to really formalize this and put some marketing materials together so that people can help understand our process and navigate it more thoughtfully. So, thank you.
City Attorney David Lightburn.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, you are all well aware, but if things go according to schedule, this should be my last public meeting with you for a little while. I hope that your next three regular public meetings will be with a contracted outside attorney. Again, that's going to be Tyler Yeoman-Mallett from the Hogberg, Reuter and Gauel Farm. He has, we have done a lot of communication, a lot of setup. A lot of my workload in the last week or so has been making sure that things are all lined up for him to take on things, for other outside council to take on things, for staff to be aware of other outside partners and avenues of communication that will make those decisions, workload efforts run smoothly. In addition to all of that, we have taken on a temporary staffer. Her name is Natalie Scribner. She will work entirely remotely but have full access to my email and calendar and all the contacts that she needs within the city. So, anybody who still needs legal advice, needs to run a question by me like you would normally, should just reach out to my email as you normally would. The rest of staff has some more detailed information about what they should do as far as communication, work, work movement through the organization. But for all purposes, emails can continue to come to me. She'll be able to get them or route them to the right place and get the answers that you still need during that time. I will just put the caveat out there that six weeks isn't really a crazy long amount of time and if you want to hold some questions till I'm back, I'll be happy to answer them when I do get back. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin, and good luck. Finance Director Katie Henry.
I'll just piggyback a little bit on what the judge was saying in Ford Municipal Court. Now that we have, we'll be moving into the interviews for the new position and we have the one position that's moved up to full-time, we're feeling like it's, we're in a good start engaging into the software. And so, we had our first meeting with IT and Court and myself as two next steps. And so, it's been long enough. We do have to go through the procurement process, so that's where we're starting, is to see what our options are for choosing the software, for, you know, do we need to go out to bid, do we have, can we go sole source, all of those things. And we'll be meeting weekly to make sure that this progresses with an intent to hopefully be fully live by the time, by the end of the fiscal year with hopefully a spring-go-live time. So, that's our goal on the municipal court side of things. We're also going through, so during this time up until we, until we're able to go live with the new software, going through our older accounts to see what we have that can actually be closed out. We have some very old accounts that have been sent to collections that really we need to do some bad debt analysis and that type of thing with it. So, we're going through that process as well in these upcoming months. On the finance side, our team is really focused on audit. It's everything audit. We're in the last couple of weeks, it's like we're in the home stretch before the auditors get here, closing out the books, getting all the schedules ready and during what I call audit season, the blinders go on during that period and there's really not much else happening. So, aside from a few policies that we're tweaking and dusting off, that's what finance is focusing on right now, is getting this audit out the door. As soon as that's out the door, we're working on renewing all of our policies, getting them out to the departments and hopefully creating a place, one centralized place where everyone can access financial policies so that we can have those all reviewed in time for the budget next year. It's something that most cities have in their budget, is their financial policies as part of their budget document and I personally would love to see that happen here. So, that's one of our large focuses right now. And that's it for us.
Great, thank you very much. Interim City Manager Adam Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a busy, busy couple of weeks. Wanted to acknowledge all the work you guys did at goal-setting and getting us through that. Director Hedges and myself have been working on an agenda to bring back before you in October, so you'll be seeing that. Been working with community stakeholders on getting the holiday tree lighting thing that was, getting the sequoia lit back up this year that was cut during budget cuts. So, wanted to thank Heather and Devin for providing some historic context on that. Thank Jeff and his team for a variety of things that I've tasked them with over the last couple of weeks, cleaning up some foliage on some stop signs before school started, working on the HVAC issue. I think that'll be something you guys will see gradually increase as we kind of dial that in, so I wouldn't expect it to be an optimized climate, your next meeting, but over the next few meetings, we'll find a sweet spot for that. And then, as I've transitioned in my onboarding and meetings on meetings, right now, we're kind of at a point to start engaging stakeholders and community partners, so that's what I'm filling my calendar up with now and special thanks to Claudia for all the help she has on getting my calendar in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it. I'm going to go to Counsel Gary. I'm going to just stay on Zoom here. Hey, Zach.
Hey, thank you very much. I've got a MURAC update, pretty brief, a few minutes. Had an update from the staff, mostly for the rest of the group on the Northwest River Site developer negotiations that are ongoing and then an update on the downtown master plan progress, but that's really that the item was going to be taken up another day. So, that's all for MURAC and that's all for my committee reports. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Counsel Tokolski.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On September 2nd, which was last Tuesday, the Airport Commission did meet. John Pascal, who is the former Salem Willamette Valley Airport Director, started his position as the new airport manager for McMinnville. So, he was present and we were able to meet him. Airport Manager Pascal has 29 years of experience. He's lived in McMinnville for decades. He met and married his wife here, so he's pretty local and he's happy to now be both living and working in McMinnville. On another note, Airport Manager Willie Williamson reworked and revised the airport fee schedule for different services and events which take place at the airport. These fees and services were actually pretty heavily discussed by the Airport Commission and agreed upon at that time. One example of that would be like hangar rent has increased by $10 per month with zero pushback, so small things like that. A reminder, on September 26th through 28th, Canadian snowbirds are coming for the air show. These are smaller planes than your F-18s like the Blue Angels. These are the primary single jet training platform for the Royal Canadian Air Force, so they're fast and they're quick and maneuverable. Should be fun to watch. I've also been told that significant work has been conducted to prep the environment and it's ready for the event, so that's also great. And on a really positive note, Airport Manager, former Airport Manager Willie Williamson has now retired for the fifth time in his life and he did attend the Airport Commission meeting and he thinks it might stick this time, so I wish him well.
Thank you. Counsel Payne.
I just want to thank Adam and Vicki for your effort in getting us really very goal-centered, so that's not a rapport, of course, but I just want to publicly share my gratitude for very productive half-day session, so thank you. Otherwise, Lipstick is meeting tomorrow and that's all, or not tomorrow, excuse me, the 24th. That's all I have.
I only had one thing too, and that was a thank you to Adam and David and Vicki and Claudia for goal-setting and to the counselors as well. It was super productive and I am excited to move forward, so thank you for all the hard work in directing us. Counsel Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Several events coming up that I'd like to just announce and actually do a quick poll of council members. Tomorrow, we've been invited to the Lynnfield President's Home at 4:30 and I was wondering if anybody on the dais besides me had RSVP'd for it?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, on October 2nd and October 3rd is the Annual League of Oregon Cities Conference. I'm thinking about attending, but I was wondering if anybody here...
I just responded that I can make it, so, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Scott. On, this is for staff, for planning staff. The Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments is having the Planners Collaborative Quarterly Meeting on September 18th and Ethan Stockmeyer from DLCD is going to be there discussing new draft rules for housing capacity analysis that are going to be released on October 1st, so I don't know if that's something that staff wants to attend, but it's in the COG connections this week if you're interested in that. Also, sticking with Council of Governments, McCray... Also sticking with Council of Governments, McCray Carmichael, our, um, our Community Development Director, has been named the COG's interim executive director, and, um, then I'd also like to invite members of council, the Council of Governments is having a legislative gathering at the Chamacata Agricultural Hub on September 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 in Salem. That facility is really amazing, so if you haven't been, it'd be a really nice opportunity to see that, as well as to meet a bunch of our local legislators. I'll be attending if anybody would like to go, just let me know. And that's it, thank you.
I'm going to just backtrack, and Claudia is going to be sending out an email that I gave her some dates for you to RSVP to, so please RSVP even if it's a no.
Yes, I already sent that out, um, which included the Mid-Willamette COG, um, Legislative Gathering, so...
Perfect. Please send it to me so I can RSVP whoever's going. Awesome, thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
I would like to echo the comments about the, uh, planning session in five years of being on council, that was one of the more productive ones that I've had the pleasure to be a part of, so thank you for all those that, uh, made that happen and were involved. Um, and then thank you, Heather, for stealing my thunder, as the only thing I have on my report today is that we have a meeting this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 for the Southwest Area Plan in here, um, and I would really encourage anybody online that has any interest about how development occurs in this city to take part, as that chunk of land is almost, not quite, little less, but one-third the size of our current city. So it is a large chunk of land that we're bringing in. So please, be a part to this, uh, make your voices heard, and let us, let the developers know what you'd like to see.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, um, the Historic Landmarks Committee actually met on our planning session day, so I was not able to attend that, but I will be, um, attending the Historic Landmark Committee interviews, uh, tomorrow morning, so, uh, and then we'll have MCM 11 meets this Thursday as well.
Great. Okay, did I miss anybody? No. Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and, um, I just want to note a couple of things, that there is amended minutes that are here, and so do I have a motion? And also just, we did remove the crazy cocktails, just a reminder of that. Do we have a consent agenda to accept the two items? Actually, let me ask, does anybody want anything removed? Sorry. I had a feeling that was what it was. I motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth, a second from Counselor Cunningham, any discussion? Claudia?
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tocolski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor President Peralta?
Yes.
Uh, the consent agenda has passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and sit tight, councilors, until I get done reading this, please. The City Council will go into the conference room for a close to the public two executive sessions. The first pursuant to ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. The second pursuant to ORS 192.6602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real estate property transactions. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse himself regarding these executive sessions for the record? I just want to declare that I have a potential conflict with the second, and am choosing to recuse myself from that. Um, and I will now adjourn this City Council meeting in...
May I, may I?
Yes.
I do, I also have a potential conflict of interest with the other one, but I will be participating, and...
Okay, so for the first one?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And I will now adjourn the City Council meeting at 8:04.